Let's do that for right now and I'll continue to try.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Yeah, you have the comment with the internet?
Yeah. Yeah. I'll keep trying.
Recording is fine.
Yeah, I've got it recording.
All right, ready to go?
Hi, welcome everyone to here at the meeting of the Skinyamas Board of Education, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. If we could observe thirty seconds of silence in recognition of victims of war in Ukraine. The board was in executive session. Now please, that a motion for us to return to regular session. It's been moved in second. Is all in favor of returning to regular session? Please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? You're back in regular session. Mr. Fugel, do you please lead us in the touch of allegiance?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
We have a forum of board members, everyone is here tonight. And we would like to introduce the mandible player.
Welcome.
Thank you. So while they're kind of getting information, this is the high school mandible player, which is an audition group from the choral program. It's pretty much like the top tier of the choral program. We rehearse at night, so we are in person now and are heading back after this, but we thought we would sing something from our next concert for you. If you did see Anastasia over the weekend, which was insanely successful, most of these kids were involved in some aspect, and now they're here rehearsing two nights later, so they are very dedicated kids. The middle school has a musical in two weeks as well, which is exciting for them because they had to cancel theirs, which impacted a lot of these guys, right before, they had to cancel it right when we closed in March of twenty twenty. So for some of those middle schools in two weeks, it would be the first time in like three or four years. So that you heard you see that as well in two weeks. But this piece we're going to perform for you is a traditional Scottish tune called Lock Roman, and it will feature a soloist, Sam Loes.
By on bonnie banks and by on bonnie braids, where the sun shines bright on lock Roman, where me and my true love will ever once again, on the bonnie bonnie banks on lock Roman. Oh, you take the higher road and I'll take the lower road, and I'll be in Scotland for ye, but me and my true love will never meet again, on the bonnie bonnie banks on lock Roman. Was there that we parted in your shape then, on the sea's deep sides of that Roman? Where did the birds of hew the island pills be you, and the moon coming out in the Roman?
There is the potential for the school to be held liable for that through that fund. There are 12 laws, code statutes for New York that may have been violated. There are 11 federal and there are seven international and that includes Nuremberg code violations that has to do with conducting experiments on people without their consent. The fourth reason that I mentioned had to do with your own personal liability. Anyway, there's a bunch of other stuff I have in here that I wanted to share with you, but I probably don't have time. If I was a board member, I would be concerned about my position in all this because in some cases it looks like you're bonded under an insurance policy with the school and in some cases there's a deductible that the school doesn't inform the school board members about. So if the insurance policy doesn't cover you or if the insurance company like your parent insurance can drop you if you have too many accidents or something, if they stop covering you, you could be on the hook for that yourself. I don't have all the answers to that stuff. You might want to look into it because you're actually in positions where you could be liable. The school's policy number is 1674408. Your insurance agent is Delmonico Insurance Company and the policy is with you, the national. Like I said, you might want to know more about it because you guys are the ones who could potentially be held liable for that. That example that I read to you about that woman who filed a claim against her school district, they hungers, their superintendent helped them drive. Anyway, that's what I wanted to share with you. I'm not intending to file, I'm not intending to serve anybody with an intent to file a claim, but anybody else in the district whose kid might have got injured, they might be. Thank you.
Who's the next speaker?
Did I get my five minutes?
Yeah. My name is Kristi Krieger and I live on Prince Drive in Skinn Hills. In regards to mask choice, I was happy to see that Skinn Hills schools are remaining especially vigilant with regard to bullying and harassment behavior associated with individual choice on masking, as quoted in your February 28th letter to your Skinn Hills families. I fully support this. There should be no bullying or harassment towards someone that chooses to wear a mask or not wear a mask. No one should be made to feel inferior, discriminated against, bullied or harassed for their individual choice when it comes to medical decisions about their own bodies. I can only hope that our Skinn Hills students don't follow your behavior and some of the teachers' behaviors when it comes to not bullying or not harassing people for their own medical decisions. It is wonderful you won't tolerate the bullying and harassment of people choosing to wear masks, but why didn't you extend that same courtesy to me in the fall when I couldn't wear a mask? I have a documented medical condition which exempts me from wearing a mask. You all medically discriminated against me by not allowing me to enter into your school board meetings without a mask when I have a legal presumption. And I was medically unable to wear one and I told the security officer that repeatedly. Instead, you sent your security officer to stand guard at the door and intimidate and deny me entrance into the board meetings in a place of public accommodation. I definitely felt bullied and harassed by the security officer and all of you because he was acting under your instructions. At one meeting, you even had a police officer here attendants. I can only speculate that that was for intimidating parents. Many children have talked to their parents about how they felt bullied and harassed for almost two years by their teachers. Students were constantly being berated about their mask wear. Did you know that little five-year-olds were being yelled at because they turned around to talk to a friend during lunch because they were eating and didn't have a mask on? Did you know that a watering student vomited in her mask one day but was too afraid to tell her teacher because she couldn't take off her mask? So she breathed in her vomit the rest of the day and went home like that with vomit and her mask. Did you know that you still had teachers bullying young kids to wear their mask correctly up over their noses on Tuesday March 1st, one day before students didn't have to wear masks anymore? Teachers and staff were even bullied by each other and by the administration due to their own personal medical choices. Mr. Landen, on February 17th regarding masking of children, you stated in an email to me that you were all complying with the law. I asked you to provide me with that law and I'm still waiting for the law. A month or so ago, our school did a universal screening to determine the emotional and mental wellbeing of students. I found it laughable considering teachers assessed whether or not a child was sad and withdrawn, for example. Yet the teachers had no idea whether students' faces or smiles even looked like at that time. A suggestion is for the school to repeat that same universal screening to its students in a few weeks now that they have been mask-free. Then you can compare the screening results for each student. Repeating the screening would give you and the administrators very valuable information and data on the impact that muscling kids for six to eight hours a day had on their mental, social and emotional wellbeing. Hopefully by doing that type of data analysis, you will never enforce the masking of children's faces in this school district again. Thank you for your time.
Jeff Goldberg, 1394 Cochrane. Very happy with the decision to make masking school optional. It is a big step in the right direction. We are already seeing a lot of positive effects from this change. Both the students and parents are getting more enjoyment out of the high school and middle school plays. Being able to see people's faces is helping the watering students with English and speech. In general, there is more optimism and less stress because of this change. I also want to point out that we are coming closer to both the school budget vote as well as the school board election. So if anyone has a strong interest in the Board of Education and wants to run for school board, you can contact the district office through the school webpage to get the needed forms to run. If interested, you should do so soon since the forms and required signatures are due by April 18th. If you are not sure if you have a strong interest in the Board of Education, if you're watching this meeting either in person or in video, is a pretty good indication that you do. I also want to thank the existing board members for all the time they have given the school district. Ensuring the quality of our children's education is a very important aspiration and I appreciate all the hours you have volunteered to this effort. Thank you.
Next speaker? I thought I had an opportunity to put a comment again. Jeff, we can continue on with the meeting. We are now at items enough to let us agree together for a few minutes on the meetings of February 1st and February 16th.
Almost second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion, any correction comments? If in all in favor of approving the minutes proposed to meetings, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Landen.
Absolutely. Thanks, Mr. Landen. I want to be very grateful tonight to leave most of the time to discuss school budget with Mr. Brown as it is officially budget season. But before I do, I just want to highlight a few things. First of all, thank you to our amazing, magical students. The talent in the school district is unbelievable. Our kids are amazing. I can tell you, having just seen Anastasia, one of the best high school performances I've ever seen, it was amazing. It's amazing to have that in our new auditorium space using some of the sound and lighting and technology that we're so fortunate to have here and our voters approved in the renovations of our theater during the Last Capital Project. So just a big thank you and this is sort of the return on investment part that is so fun. So the voices, the talent, the dedication of our teachers, all of our musicians, all the community members that come out to work in the pit and put this whole production together is just remarkable. It was a professional quality play production put on by a bunch of high school kids and I was blown away. The second thing I wanted to highlight was all of our amazing and talented kids from State Street that participated in Odyssey of the Mind and have now moved on in their competitions. We'll make some of the future dates and highlight some opportunities to hopefully see these kids in action in a variety of problems and skits and sets. The creativity is unbelievable. It is a student-run activity and the things that the kids come up with are remarkable. And then again, just another example of the many hours our community members put in in support of our kids, the parents that are here weekends and nights. And it was great that people were able to gather and celebrate during the awards ceremony a couple Saturdays ago. The new facilities are officially open for business in a lot of different places. The auditorium is obviously had a big debut with the play and to have it actually finally completely done with our own sound system and our own lighting and our own projectors and things like that has been great for the kids and the teachers alike. The middle school gymnasium is open and usable and beautiful and amazing and if anybody wants tours of the new facilities, like Connor and I offer at every board meeting, please let us know and we'll happily take people around and show them what all the community tax dollars look like in completion. Last two things, just spring is upon us. Hopefully we experienced our last snowstorm over the weekend. It is officially mud season in central New York, so... But it's great to see the kids back out in the fields and practicing outdoors. And lastly, our strategic planning process continues. We had solicited a community partnership months ago for the next step in our strategic plan and all of the community members that were selected by our committee to participate in our community group will be meeting this coming March 28th. We're excited to continue with that process to rebuild the district's mission, vision, core values and establish a clear path for the next five years at Skinn Hills Schools. And that's all for today.
Thank you, Mr. Landen. Are there questions for Mr. Landen's report?
Just a couple quick ones. So the strategic planning on March 28th, those community members have been...
Everybody was notified, yes.
How many community members this year? I should know this, buddy.
It's a team of 50 people, including community members, school leaders, Board of Education members.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Any further questions?
Unrelated to anything you mentioned, but can you speak a little bit to where we are with that? UPK funding, the highlights, the challenges, like using it?
Yes.
And just talk a little bit about that.
Yes, so and Connor will highlight that in part of the school budget presentation. So the last two years, the district was afforded about $118,000 of funding for UPK programs, but that number is a little bit deceptive. $118,000 is the total allocation that the district can receive if it uses all 22 of its slots. So the way it breaks down is roughly $5,400 per child. 54 times, $5,400 times 22 equals about that $118,000. That would be our total allotment. When we start talking about adding UPK for a community, we have looked into a number of different things. We looked into how to target our special ed population, how to target academically disadvantaged populations and the rules for being able to access and use those funds are remarkably strict. So the only solution that we can do as a district to offer anything is buy lottery. So when you start talking about a lottery, that is you would put it out to the entire district. Anybody who is interested can apply. There would be a public drawing of names. And then roughly, we figured if we were able to even find space to run a single classroom, it would be at the most 12 children. Those 12 children would need both a classroom teacher and an aide to be present in that classroom. So just the cost of the classroom teacher and the aide, in addition to the facilities costs, some of the materials, some of the things that are really specific to UPK, think little toilets, little sinks, little furniture, you very quickly blow that $118,000 out of the water. And that $118,000 wouldn't even be allocated because we would only be using a fraction of that if we had up to 12 kids. So I think our goal as a district, if we're going to look at UPK and do it seriously, my trajectory would be to offer it as an entire additional grade where we would open it community-wide and we would run a full-year program, a full-day program for as many Skinn Hills parents as wanted to send their kids. That is knocking down its challenges as well as we would be looking for five to six, possibly seven, new classroom spaces that we don't have, new teachers that we don't have, aides and then all the other ancillary furniture and things like that. So this is something that we should continue to work towards. The other thing that's important about the $118,000 allocation is though it was offered last year late and this year as well, there's no promise for future funding. So any investments in UPK that the district makes, it has to make fully understanding that we will own the entire cost of that forever. We're very reluctant to roll anything out that we are not 100% certain that we can sustain indefinitely for the community.
But correct me if I'm wrong, there was a good portion in the thought exchange who of our public who were in favor of that?
We did. We got a pretty good, pretty solid feedback and thought exchange. People that are interested in it, I've met with a number of parents already that have expressed interest in it. So if this is something that the board wishes to pursue, that it's a part of a much larger, much more expansive plan that would require renovations, buildings, hiring multiple people, things like that.
So are we going to move forward with a lottery to try to use up the $118 and try to do a pilot year to see how it goes?
So I'm a little reluctant to answer that question yet because we haven't identified...
It's not a tip. How can you, could you say that that's not a...
We're still looking at it. If there's a way for us to offer anything else for the business community, we would want to try to do it. But I am very reluctant to offer something as a service to the community until we know we can sustain it indefinitely. Rebecca?
Was there any discussion in the group about partnering with someone in the community?
So we looked at partnering and a lot of the, that was our initial thought was, can we provide training, material, professional development to some of the partner agencies in the community? And the rules were really specific about maybe you can't do that, it has to be outside, it has to be full day and unfortunately, the way it's set up complicates it. That was our initial thought was, how do we flood the local agencies with resources so that we have, you know, kids starting their educational experience with science and literacy aligned curriculum? And unfortunately, the rules don't allow us to do that.
As we look at the long-term possibility of this, is there some info that you could get? Because there's a lot of members of the community and with the exception of one board member, we have all passed that UPK age.
Sure.
And I think it would be beneficial whether we pursue this or we don't. I don't want to put a high school parent or taxpayer or someone whose kids are completely out of the district. I don't want to put them in a position to have to vote yes or no on some day down the line, not this year. Just based on, well, my kids went to preschool and they were fine. Okay, well, great, but a lot has changed. But, and I personally don't know anything about UPK programs, so some benefit and/or not great things about sending kids to UPK versus traditional preschool, I think that would be helpful for the board to understand and, but also the community at large. Because if it is something that we're going to look at that will take us several years to put in place, everybody, because everybody is a taxpayer and we are all ultimately going to have to fund this, we would have to understand why is beneficial for the district? And I'm sure there are numerous benefits. One of them is making sure that all children have access to it if they choose to because there's a lot of kids that can't afford a private preschool program. But I think it would be helpful to get some of that basic information. Forget about the mini toilets and the desks and the teachers and the classrooms. To me, that's somewhat secondary. Let's talk about why we should consider putting in a UPK program and how that would benefit the students. And if there's a huge benefit, I guarantee you we will find a way to do it and we will find money to do it.
Yeah. I think we need to gauge the level of community interest. We need to understand how it's going to affect local providers. Target them in any ways that we can. I think we have to understand how those funds are going to be distributed in the future or if this is something that Skinn Hills taxpayers will be able to hook for indefinitely. I would encourage parents that are interested, reach out to board members, talk to board members, reach out to myself and let us know what your level of interest is. Because there's a lot of parents that would absolutely need this as a service and there's a lot of parents that will still opt to keep their children home for that additional year. And if we're going to offer it, it has to be wide open and we have to be prepared to add a full grade campus-wide to our program. Now academically, there's a lot of positives and we can start to gather that...
I think it'd be helpful for us to see that data and what the benefits of UPK program are. I mean, we all probably can guess what they are, but I think having actual case studies or whatever it is would be helpful.
For the lottery option, there's some concerns too. We've been in contact with a couple of the districts that have done it to try to understand the good and the bad. We had one example that was given to us, a twin children, one died and one didn't. So parents opt to keep them both out. You know, there's a lot of different scenarios that way. It is a straight lottery that in public, maybe that in a hackout thing. We are trying to figure out if we even have the space to do it this year. And if we do, then there's a lot of conversations that we've had, a lot of communication between about what exactly this is going to look like.
So in the spirit of trying to be empowering and supportive of individual parents, particularly of children at that young age, any opportunity to use any of that money toward funding parents for homeschooling purposes for a young age, being able to buy materials for kids?
The rules were really specific about our program, full day, on-site, instructed by our people.
So at this point though, there's basically $118,000 on the table potentially infused through the federal government, right? And at this time, we don't have a means to accept that money and spend it based on what we currently know.
Correct. Last year, we did not accept it. We made available pretty late in the game that we did not accept it. And now this year, we're still in the process of exploring whether anything can do that. Sure, starting a whole program.
Do you know now you're talking four-year-olds?
But timeline or not?
Yeah. It would be the cutoff date.
Yeah, but four. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a timeline on kind of the when you might be able to make that decision? Like preschool registration is happening now.
Yeah.
Right? So I mean, we're all long...
It would have to be within the next six weeks or so that we figure out how to do this if we can do anything.
If we can do that. And now how, I mean, this isn't really a question that I can answer at all, but if we were to own our own program, right? We do a slow rollout, let's say our goal 2025, 2026. We have a UPK program that would draw young families. I mean, we're talking about babies that aren't even born yet. So how do you anticipate gathering, you know, gauging the interest of the community? When you would be looking at drawing new families, making it affordable for people to move here, to attract, you know, and again, not an answerable question, but something to put out there because again, we're talking about kids that, you know, if your kid is three or four right now, that we're not talking about servicing that with UPK. It's the kids that are babies.
I think the complication comes in two when, if the board remembers a couple of years ago, there was lower census coming into Waterman and there were even conversations, facility studies about potentially closing one of our elementary buildings because we were having fewer sections. That is not the case anymore. We're operating five sections out of K-12. And we're at, I think we're at almost 80 students already registered for next kindergarten year, which is again, five sections. So it's a great problem because now we have students to fill the buildings. But whereas maybe five years ago, we had vacant space that we very easily could have found, five classrooms, those are done.
I guess, you know.
This would be probably the most likely place to house something like that. And obviously, there'd have to be some renovations and things like that to make it possible.
I would just hate to see us also, we have to be very thoughtful in whether or not we take this on. This district, we have to own that, build it into the budget for years to come.
Forever.
But I wonder, you know, is the hesitancy of at some point, would we need to pull that program back? Going to prevent us from potentially launching a successful program or having a successful program for 10 years?
There's a lot of published will for UPK.
We really can't justify this anymore in the same way that we make every other difficult decision when we can't justify something.
Yeah. I think the decision is just that, you need to commit for a certain period of time, yeah.
Thoughtful risks, I guess, you know.
But this is like a million-dollar risk because if you figure, let's say it's four classes or five, five sections or whatever, the, you might, because my personal take is a risk of trying something that's a short-term program, we're going to try to offer a robotics class or whatever and we're going to hire a .4 teacher and if it doesn't get enrollment, okay, well, then that can, it can be so...
We can reevaluate that.
But this is a very expensive risk in the million dollars. I'm just, Connor, I'm totally pulling that number out of the sky. It's really rough math. And that doesn't even count the mini toilets. That's just for teachers. Never mind the classrooms and the stuff inside the classrooms to make it work. So that's what my fear is.
When you think of like, what's an appropriate class size? So I was a high school teacher. I regularly had sections of 30 kids. That was fine until I learned, I dared you to walk into a kindergarten with 30 kids in it. Yeah, that was all.
I think also though, that this doesn't have to be a full-blown program. You can have a pre-K program that might not start out for all. You know, maybe eventually it might get to be for all. But I was wondering, do we have actually a plan to gauge interest?
So the process in other districts starts with a survey and gauge community interest. The other thing that's on the table, if the district is going to invest in a program like this, $118,000 is a drop in the bucket. But the second, you don't take those funds, then we get the negative rules. So if the district is going to expand funds on a program and they want to do a long-term program and invest in it, if we don't want that federal stimulus money or whatever it is, then all of a sudden, we get to change the rules a whole time.
And is there a length of time or are there other districts? I think Liverpool does a lottery. Could we say we only are ever going to run two classrooms and a lifelong lottery? I mean, that's not a deal, but could we, are we committed to...
Or what if it services low-income families and students who have gone through...
You can't take the funding.
No.
If you skip, if you skip the funding.
If we had our own funding that only ever ran a small program but was specifically meant to service those kids that we need to take on their own aim?
A lot of times, the stigma of that sort of thing will prevent some enrollment.
In this district especially.
Yeah. And then the other side is if it's, you know, if it was targeting students with disabilities, then it's a special class and there's all sorts of rules and restrictions about that.
So I think we can get over that, but I'm optimistic that stigma, okay. But if your kid needs it, your kid needs it. We used to have a pre-K here, a development K kindergarten. So we addressed younger beings, students. You know, not everyone gets to the finish line at the same time.
Yeah, there's great procedures and there's a criteria for how kids get it and things like that. So we'd all be up, absolutely.
But my concern with all this is when we displace, you know, we face a problem that's not broken. We've got good organizations with our, within our community, but I don't think we necessarily catch all kids through those organizations that maybe need services.
We wonder too, if we, if we were to scan a certain number of four-year-olds off the top, would that actually create more bandwidth for those organizations to service kids three and under? I don't know. We need to, I think, start...
I can help provide for more close-out.
Yeah. The difficult thing about it is, you know, once you're of school age, for the most part, people show up for school. If you, if you advertise a UPK program and you and UPK is universal, you have to be prepared to serve every kid that shows up. So if we have 80 kids show up like a kindergarten class, great. Now we know what we have to build that off of. But if you have 35, then all the needs are different. And I wonder, how do you manage the fluctuation of that year to year? I think we'd probably grow in interest. Again, if we had a certain number in mind or a certain thing in mind, target and we don't accept the federal funds, then we have a little bit... then we have a little bit more control over the process.
Do you know if the federal funds, does every community get fifty-four hundred dollars per student?
So some districts were allocated, it's all need-based, and with the math that the, the state uses to determine our need, we don't have a lot of need. So there are a lot of districts that have far more. There's, there's a lot of high-poverty districts that have had fully-funded UPK pre-K programs for a decade.
I think the money has also changed year to year. So some years, it's been more money and.
I mean, with that hundred eighteen thousand, we don't know if we'll ever get that again. There's a lot of political will behind it. Early intervention and UPK, there's, there's bodies of research about the benefit of that.
So just, just to throw a monkey wrench in before we get to kind of the presentation, if we're gonna consider UPK, I would throw my hat in there and say then why aren't we gonna consider bringing back pre-first or whatever? I have some districts call it pre-first, some call it development. Those are kids that are already in our system here, that we already have a place for, that aren't quite ready, that we are either pushing to first grade or we're keeping back in kindergarten. That to me, and I could be wrong, and this is where Francine's, you know, eight-hundred charts come in handy, and, you know, feedback from the teachers, but it seems like that might be a place that I would say we should start first. Where we've got those kids here, we have the infrastructure already in place. We already had that program in the district and it was very well-received. And there's a lot of parents of students now that would tell you that it served their child very well. And maybe that's something we should look at first because that's typically was one section. And then move on to a UPK thing, which is like a whole new nugget that we are not gonna solve tonight because there is clearly a lot to sort out there. But why would we go all the way ahead with the UPK, which certainly has endless benefits, when we've already got kids that are on track to come into the district that we know we have a potential little gap for, that we really should be considering? So just to confine the waters more.
Yeah. Once, once the conversation about not accepting the federal funds starts, then the options are ready.
Right, which means that we're back to our strategic part. What do we wanna look like in five years' time? What do we need to focus on?
Yeah.
The federal funding has brought to life, oh, there are funds, oh, we can put towards new this pre-K, oh, we can do all that. Because federal funds are available.
Right.
Right? But if we separate that out, if you remove it altogether, whether we get two hundred thousand, two million dollars federal funding, whether it fluctuates or, or it's, it's pretty steady stays. The real question is what do we wanna look like on strategic, strategic side?
That's the best.
All right? And, and I think that's what, as a board, that's what it is to be, decide what our focus needs to be. And then we could back into how, how we're gonna execute it. We're gonna back into how we allocate funds. But by any question process, we're gonna back into, you know, how we can fund it for the next four years, five years in perpetuity. So I think the conversation really needs to start with strategically, where do we want this, where does this lie on the, on the continuum? And once we establish that, the rest, the rest will just fall into place.
And we, we can hear some of that in the, in the thought exchange. So there's definitely a population that wants to see this. So if that's the direction that we go in, then.
And we're gonna have to make that decision, right? What, you know, like I said before, it might be repetitive. And maybe thought exchange is, is a springboard for it because there's both aligned, a certain degree of interest. But how broad-based is it? And how does it, thought exchange or no thought exchange, how does it align with really providing, you know, an excellent educational activity for the full spectrum, starting at very tender age, so that we receive rewards for the role? So strategic is, absolutely.
Thank you. Connor, we're not to follow, but.
All right. So a- as we all know, with, with just over two months, we have a budget vote. We're fully engulfed in budget prep. We had two budget workshops, one yesterday and one on the tenth. This is pretty much the slide, the slideshow we've, we went through. It'll be projected. There are also handouts over on the side if you, if you can't see it. So I'll, I'll pretty much do high level and then we're looking for conversations and questions because it's somewhat lengthy, so.
People want to look for chairs, you can move your chairs around so you can see the presentation if you want.
Just a quick agenda. We'll look at the propositions. We'll talk about B O E election information, challenges we've had, revenues that are coming in, expenses that are driving the budget, what initiatives we have out there and how we're investing them. Federal funding, what we've been using those funds on and how that's benefited the district, and then just some upcoming dates to look at. So the propositions for the May seventeenth vote will be, the first, lead option, general fund budget. It'll obviously be a more lengthier language than this, but we obviously don't have the numbers yet. Once you figure out what tax cap is, what the final state aid figures are, proposition one will be adoption of that number. Proposition two will, you've seen year in and year out, ability to purchase new buses for our five-year replacement plan, up to five hundred one thousand dollars this year. And then new, this year, since two thousand sixteen, proposition three will be an increase to the Skinniattles library levy. An additional fourteen thousand dollars, up to three hundred sixty-four thousand dollars now.
And that has zero to do with the school district, except we are the place where you will vote on that proposition. That is our sole involvement in the library budget. Yeah? Just saying it out loud because a lot of people don't read the stuff and then they say, you guys are taking my money for the library? And we have nothing to do with the library budget, except we are the place where you come to vote.
Please note, a lot of the proposition is unrelated to the school budget. We act solely as a collection agent for them. So it's all on one property, one on one property tax bill, and that's basically the extent of it. We do not see what they spend their money on. We don't see any other money coming in. We collect and give over.
All those said, I like the idea that the school is supportive of the library in our community, but there's.
Yes, but, but we are separate. We are separate.
Absolutely. So they provided some slides for us to include in budget talks, just so everybody's aware. So again, New York State residents, New York State gives direct say in library funding through the, the school district vote, but the budgets are separate. The district merely, merely collects the funds approved by the voters and then disperses them to the library. Again, that is the extent. So the increase they're looking at is four percent, which is fourteen thousand dollars. Again, library only, not district levy, district budget increase. So initially, they had a total levy of three hundred fifty thousand dollars back in twenty sixteen. This is their, their first request in six, in six years. So that's why you haven't seen it on your ballot in the past six years. You only have to go up where there's an increase in the levy. So once they got the initial funding, they had an increase since twenty sixteen. So now they're seeing an increase. They need additional funding so that we can vote or approve.
Is this going on our school website with our other budget information?
Everything will be on the website, yeah.
Could I kind of make a request that on this one in particular, I know it's sandwiched between other library ones, you make a notation on this one, again, this is strictly the Skinniattles public library budget. This has nothing to do with the school budget.
Yeah.
I think, just make it loud and clear. I know people go in droves to the website to read budget info. And I want to make sure it's crystal clear.
Absolutely. So again, if, so the budget is supplemented by investment income, book sales, donations, or grants. Again, this was provided by them. We don't see their other money coming in. We just collect their levy and disperse it to them. So if approved, it would be three hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. What this means for you, so again, library tax only, if we're an assessed house at two hundred thousand dollars, it's less than a dollar fifty. Four hundred thousand dollars is less than three dollars. Three hundred thousand dollars is less than six dollars.
Take away that two hundred thousand dollar house?
Well, we, we crunch some numbers and the, the advertised house is around three hundred forty-eight, three hundred forty-nine thousand dollars. And the most, the mode or the median is, is about two hundred twenty-five thousand, so. So this is that, what the Skinniattles library proposition will read. Shall assembly raised by annual tax levy upon the taxable real property within the Skinniattles School District for the purpose of funding the Skinniattles Library Association be increased by fourteen thousand dollars to the sum of three hundred sixty-four thousand dollars annually? So any questions? There is a handout over there, front and back, two-page here with information. And you can also contact the libraries and their phone number and email address as well. So I'll, I'll really answer any question because I don't want to speak for them. So if there are questions, you can reach out to them. So on to district stuff, board election information. So there'll be four seats up for election, May seventeenth. There'll be two, three term, three-year terms. So Tom Lanza and Danielle Flaggencie will be ending their terms. There'll be one, one-plus-year term that'll run through twenty twenty-three school year. So it's currently held by Mr. Campbell, who replaced Mr. Durst. And there will be one two-plus-year term that'll run through the twenty twenty-four school year. That's currently held by Ms. Heverly and who replaced Michael Kill. So why there are different terms, you, you, you have to complete the term that that board member sat. So there aren't six people going out, turning over at once. So it's spaced out. So there's two, two, and then three.
And how in the, the length of the terms will be determined by the number of votes.
The number of at-large districts. We don't, we don't do seat-specific board elections. So it's all determined by the number of votes, get the longest terms out of the slide of scale.
Which is all on his website if someone has questions.
There'll be a F A Q to be up. So just a timeline. So documents are available right now at the district office from Mrs. York. Petition event information is due April eighteenth, which is thirty days before the vote. Then the order of the candidates on the ballot will be drawn that next morning on April nineteenth, right here at the district office. Then there'll be a candidate introduction night on May third, which we, we did last year and previously. For the chances to introduce themselves, pitch themselves to the community and just talk about themselves and their initiatives and what they're most interested in. And then the vote will be on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. So going into challenges, I'll, I'll highlight these and then if there's any questions, feel free to jump in. So just, you know, we are always weighing revenue concerns, what's coming in, and our fiscal accountability with no raising taxes. We operate as a business. Costs go up, salaries go up, but we always have to keep up with inflation as much as we can. The buses leaving the station, we, we need to be on it at least before, we need to keep up with that, those increases. So just some revenue concerns. So Skinniattles is gonna receive a minimum foundation aid increase of three percent. So that's the minimum of all school districts throughout. New York State, I'll get into that as we talk about state aid. We're shackled by the tax cap calculation, so we can only raise taxes to a certain amount. If we wanna go above that, we have to get a supermajority. So that's at least sixty percent of the vote. So if we were to, for example, start a UPK program, we needed more funding. We could go above the tax gap, but we're gonna have to get sixty percent of the votes for yes. And then just limited on the revenue streams. There's not much else out there. We can't solicit and ask for donations and stuff like that. So we're very limited in other revenue streams. So our main goals here are to maintain strong program offerings and save them off in the environment. Last thing we want to do is ever take away, we'll often go more and more. Direct academic intervention services, social, emotional, mental health initiatives that we've been taking on lately that have been a, a real driver in what we're looking at lately. Then just, extracurricular and athletic opportunities. We're thankful enough to have all these opportunities with, for our students. And we're thankful enough to have very successful athletic teams. What, what comes with that is additional pay, additional bus runs, additional expenses. So it does come with a cost, but it's a good problem to have. Ongoing concerns regarding COVID nineteen. We're at a, a pretty much a wall right now. We're maskless. But we just don't know what will happen in the future. So we're always diligent in that and what they're diligent with that and ready to flip a switch when that needs to happen. Increased technology needs for the future. Within the past five years, we've over-tripled our devices deployed. We've had to add a land technician, our director, Carl, who always hands the camera over here, does great work.
Like the Blackwater Rock?
Being one of our, our minions, just taking troubleshooting throughout the district because we are one-to-one with all students and staff. So there are just.
Can't wait till we have those calculators. Science for calculators for the budget.
Computers, I've got. But that, that's not going away. It's just gonna get more and more and more and more advanced. And, and we definitely need to provide that for our students and staff. Increased amount of retirement. So this year, we've had seven. That's a lot. And we've had, we have some senior staff and we expect more. So what that looks like transition-wise, replacement-wise, and just preparing for that with transition and making sure we're not hurting any of our students and putting some data fresh without the, the proper foundation to stand on to do, do a good job. Long-range planning and forecasting is tough enough to do before COVID. Now with all the unknowns, just looking, you can't budget one year. You need to be looking three, five years down the road. And with so many unknowns, it just makes the job tougher. So just always being forward-thinking of the three, five, five-year plan as we're working through our strategic plan. And then the federal stimulus day. We'll go through some things on what we've been spending these funds on. But as we all know, the well is gonna dry up. Those funds do not always be there. These were from the stimulus packages once COVID hit. And we only have a certain amount of time to spend those funds, but they will dry up. But we're using those. We need to be diligent in building into the budget and making sure we, we're not taking over the way once these funds are done. So types of revenue, again, very limited compared to the expenses that are driving it. We have property taxes, which are around seventy-three, seventy-five percent of our budget, obviously the biggest. State aid, twenty-one to twenty-five percent of the annual budget. So miscellaneous aid categories, like I said before, it's minimal. Includes sales of buses, other stuff like that that I'll get into, but on the grand scheme, I think that's up to a million dollars on a, on a thirty-seven million dollar project, or budget. Doesn't get you very far. And it's not much leeway there. And then using our reserves and fund balances as a way to offset expenses and fluctuations in the budget and these retirements and other stuff that we have unexpectedly. So the tax cap calculation, so this was made up by the state and this is what all districts have to follow. Put your numbers in here and it pumps out a number, which is called your tax cap number, and you have to, you have to abide by that. So like I said before, you have to stay within that. If you want fifty percent of the, the votes, if you wanna go over, as I said before, if you wanna go, go off for additional funding, but at least get a supermajority or sixty percent. So just as complicated as it is, just to show you, here are the numbers. So the tax cap levy, again, I'll just do high level. This year, almost twenty-six point six million dollars. Two things here that are totally out of the districts, or three things actually that are out of the district's hands and have no control over are the tax-based growth factor, pilots, and the allowable growth factor. So the tax-based growth factor is the amount of growth actually happening in the district. So the state and county set, set this. So this is at just about one percent, so one point zero zero nine six. So that's saying we have one percent of growth in our district. So we take that, we're saying, if your property has gone up this much, you can go up and tax them this much more. So we, we multiply that by our current levy, so it gets us just over twenty-six point eight million dollars. We add in our pilots that we collect this current year in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, which gets us just over twenty-seven million dollars. Then we take out our, our year exemptions. So technically, this current year's exemptions. And what those are is basically all your debt minus your aid, and then it's your local share of expenditures. So you take all the debt, minus all the aid you take back, the aid you get back. And then the, the exemption is the amount that you can go out to a local community to raise. So they're saying that we already collected it this year, so you take that out for the coming year. Then the allowable growth factor, again, not anything we can control. It is the, the misconception out there is you can't raise your taxes more than two percent. The misconception lays, lays right here and it's just part of the formula. So as we know, we've seen inflation rates up to seven, six, seven percent in January. But this is not, not indicative of that. It's capped at two percent. It can go lower than two percent, but it can also go higher than two percent. So yes, inflation is higher, but we. So yes, inflation is higher, but we can only go up to 2%. So we take that amount and multiply it by two and then take out our projected pilots that we're getting for the current year. So they're saying that we're getting these pilots next year. You can't go out and collect that money. You're already gaining it from those businesses.
Could you explain what a pilot is?
Pilots are payments and those taxes.
Yeah.
So people are--
You know, we got to talk to the comments. So payments and all the taxes, and those paid every year. We get those, we get pilots every year.
We are--
It's always a, I know that factors into your--
There's a, there's a contract that goes between the district and the organization or company. It's usually around 10, 15, 20 years. So they're not all forever, but we are scheduled to get those for the foreseeable future.
Okay, thanks.
So we're just over $24.6 million. Then, like I said, the exemptions are, this next coming year, our debt minus the aid that we're getting back, the local expenditures that we can go out and collect. So we add that in for, to get us to our final number of just over $27.3 million. We minus, minus our current year levy, which gets us an available amount to go out to collect of $756,331 for 2.84%. So that is our tax cap levy for this next coming year is 2.84%. Very more simplified. Again, 2.84%. Things that influence it, pilots not in our control, tax-based growth factor and allowable growth factor not in our control. The only thing is the capital expenditures that we, the voters invested in capital improvements. We are paying off debt, we're getting aid on that. So that's something that is in our control and something that we can influence. But most of the other things that we cannot. So just a five-year tax cap levy history. So won't spend too much time on here, but over the past five years, you can see that we've only went to the tax cap one time. And that was in the spring of 2020, which was formerly known as the onset of COVID. And that was in the room, we're looking, boom, boom, boom of 20% cuts. Eric got here and eight teachers possibly being cut on the table. So those are the type of discussions that we're having. So we had to go out and collect what, what we could. And at that time, it was just over 2%. So that wasn't significant. But if you see the trend here, we are sitting around that high two, or high one, low two amount and have only went in the past five years to the cap one time. How much we've raised over the year and then the difference that was left on the table. So tax increase scenarios. We started at 1.82 and then incrementally went up to the tax cap of 2.84. Why are we stuck at 1.82 is that's covering our contractual obligations. So salary increases. But like I said before, the buses leaving the station with these amounts that we have to pay no matter what, that covers that amount. And that is our recommendation as before. We need to cover those expenses and whatever, anything additional, we can invest in new initiatives, start to build in those federal funds that we're spending and other, other initiatives. So just examples of tax increases at these amount, housing values of $250,000, $350,000, $450,000. So that'll be just for visual, for actual numbers. It's freezing. There we go. So these would be the actual tax rates at, so let me just go back real quick and just explain that this is a blended rate. So this won't be exactly the same for each township. There's other factors that go into that, like equalization rates that the district has no control over. So which brings us into this next slide that you'll see the tax rates are different in all of our townships aside from Marcellus and Niles. And that's because they are valued and assessed at 100%, 100% equalization rate. So this wouldn't be the, so essentially if everything was assessed at 100%, it would be the 12.184426. If that's not the case, they are different through all the townships. You see Owasko is very high. They're around 78% assessed. So every taxpayer gets that, that increase. So just an illustration here that taxes will be different at different townships. Those numbers are not solidified until those equalization rates come out this summer.
And Connor, just remind us. So it's at our April meeting that we will, as a board, discuss the various tax rates and what we would like to put forward to the voters for the tax increase.
Preferably a bit tonight, a bit at April 5th. And then the board, the budget will be up for adoption on the 19th.
Required by law, are they corporations?
So just a powerful slide here, tax comparison rates over throughout Onondaga County. Skinnellis here at true value of 12.26 per thousand dollars of assessed. If you see other school districts around the county, our records are 22, all the way up to almost $30 per thousand dollar assessed. And that was in 2020, 2021 school year. The reason why we are so low is because of the significant property value here, which drives down the amount for the rate. So just to show that our tax rates are low comparatively to other districts. We don't put other school districts here just for the stigma, but these are actual school districts that are surrounding on the background. So the initial governor's aid run in January, so they come out with an initial aid run in January and then come out with final numbers people first. This is Governor Hokel's first shot at this. So hopefully she delivers non-time budget. But Governor Kohn was famous for kind of holding those hostage until he got some other agenda items completed. And sometimes we can see those till, you know, early April 11th, 12th, and then we're supposed to adopt on the 19th. So it's crunch time. So hopefully she can deliver a non-time budget and get us our numbers as quick as possible. So just to run through these quick, the foundation aid, as I mentioned, the change in foundation aid, we're having a $127,000 increase and that's a percent change of 3%. That is the floor that all districts got. So as us being a more affluent district, we're not getting the big pieces of pie. We're pretty much getting the crumbs. So that is the minimum. Other districts have 10, 12, 15, 20, 20% increases just because their need is there. Again, we talked about the UPK amount. So last year was the first year that we were even allotted this amount. We've never seen it before. So that was the first time funding was available to us. There was a shock, which we went into kind of the mode of, all right, let's contact the state. What is this name? How is, how can we access these funds? And then again, we have received the same allocation for this year. So I can't remember who asked the question. I think it was Tom. But the amount is different per school district. So we have $5,400. Others are a lot more. So we are pretty much towards the bottom of amount of funding that we can receive. Bosie's aid, so a kickback from Bosie's, providing services from Bosie's. Then we have high cost, excess cost aid. So those are special education students that have high costs allotted to us that we get a kickback fund based off thresholds. So if there are thresholds around $47,000, if there's a student that costs more than that, say $100,000 or strictly $50,000 that we could possibly get aid on based off our aid ratio. And that aid ratio is different as well, always between the different districts. So ours is around 25%. So other districts are significantly higher, around 90%. If you look at the more, the struggling districts.
So all media base?
All media base, correct. So we have IMAID, which is instructional materials aid. So that's hardware, technology, software, library, textbook aid. That is strictly fixed. There's an amount that is set by the state per student. So it's all enrollment-driven. So every district basically has the same amount based off their enrollment. So predictable and a fixed amount that we can usually predict. Transportation aid, so that's transportation on our contract busing, extra runs, purchasing buses. You see a little uptick of here. We have some increase in bus prices, so we'll get a little bit more kickback on that. Building aid, pretty flat here. There are, there is a bit of funding not included in here because the state made a new regulation that they won't include amounts in their runs when all reports haven't been filed yet. So there is additional funding for our building aid that will be coming next year that will happen in future presentations when that aid run's final. And then again, special needs students for excess cost aid is the same student. Just a kickback on that. So again, a year-to-year change is over, just over $185,000. But again, it is a little bit more just based on the building aid that we expect to receive with these projects coming to close this summer. Any questions on that? Miscellaneous revenues I talked about, very, very limited. Our biggest fund is either our sale of transportation equipment. We're receiving more for our sale of buses. So previously, we were selling, before we got our, on our five-year bus replacement plan, we were selling nine, 10, 11, 12-year-old buses and receiving about $4,000 to $7,000 for them. Now we're turning them over and receiving almost $30,000, $35,000 for a bus. So it's a big uptick. There's less maintenance on these buses throughout the years. And it's just definitely a good investment that the district invested in and the board supported. Revenues from prior year expenses. So that includes some Bosie's stuff that, that gets turned back. So we have dividends, insurance that's come back and other years. Just refunds from prior year expenses that we spent in the prior year. Medicaid reimbursement. We have rental facilities. Bosie's rents some of our rooms up in the high school. So we charge them for that. Our transportation facility, the town has basically half of that. So we charge them for rent. And then just other groups that use our facilities. Onondaga County sales tax, that's all based off spending in Onondaga County. So again, we're, we get probably the fewest amount of dollars, but every, every school district in Onondaga County gets a kickback from the sales tax revenue. Charges for other services and then other stuff, just like interest, sales, scrap metal, gifts, donations, little things like that. Big expenses that are driving that. So, so as I said, the 1.82 covers our contractual obligations. So that's just almost $484,000. Last year we went 1.78, which covered our contractual obligations with around $460-something thousand. So obviously that's the incremental increase there. Borrowing on debt, so these capital projects are coming to a close. Final, we're looking at bonding. So those, those costs are going up. Additional equipment, so we have a couple of requests for some one-time purchases for this coming year to support some programs. Employee benefits, this is an increase of $41,000. So as you started this year, this includes a deduction of $80,000 from a transfer of the unemployment reserve. So as just a quick history, at when COVID hit, the amount of unemployment insurance claims that came in, the amount of fraud that came in, we had layoffs for those. We were flooded with unemployment claims. So the district was thoughtful enough to set aside funds to support these unemployment claims through, through reserve funding. Those have subsided dramatically. So we do not need a $85,000 influx to support those claims. So this number is a little deflated. So if you add $85,000 to this, it's more like a $125,000, $26,000 increase.
Connor, what you mentioned, fraudulent, fraudulent claims, that they did not come from people within our own community, they did go over the internet from other sources.
Hackers and, yeah, you know, obtaining information and buying information. So just the amount of paperwork and amount of stuff that rolled in during that probably year was just insurmountable. Interfund transfers of an increase of $35,000. So what this is, is there's funding out there to support, from the state, to support new cameras and security. So what this is, this operates basically as a capital outlay project. So usually bigger projects, you spend money and you get aided over 15 years. We do, currently do a $100,000 capital outlay project that just does, targets specific things in our, in our district. We've been doing door replacement, fire-rated doors to make sure we're code compliant. So you don't get aided over 15 years, you get aided that next year immediately. So there's, we, and back in 2017, 2018, we had the Smart Schools Bond Act money that we invested in new camera systems. Those cameras could become obsolete. So we can either invest in this funding through the government, two, we're starting to replace those cameras, or we replace them on our own. So it's, it's pretty much a no-brainer to tap into those funds. So we get 62.9% per dollar spent, so up to $35,000. So just replacing those cameras, being more proactive with that. Custodial positions, four FTEs. So facilities audit that we had done in December will become public very shortly. So we've had conversations with the board and with Auto Pleasure Finance that this is a definite need. There was a study done that says we are severely understaffed. We're investing all these funds through capital projects and capital improvements to make our buildings better. We need to keep them clean and we need to maintain them. So building up our, our staff and properly, properly putting our staff at appropriate staffing levels is crucial. So we have many people, many administrators cleaning and not being able, being able to do their administrative jobs. So appropriate staffing level is significant and we do recommend that. Bosie's services. So we, as, as you saw in the state aid run, we do as much with Bosie's as we possibly can. We get a kickback from that. So we'll see an additional $165,000, just over, of additional Bosie's services for this coming year. It kind of skews the materials and, materials and supplies and contractual items because there's less of an increase here because we are flooding more of those things to Bosie's to get that kickback and find what we like to call a dance partner to, to go with Bosie's and grab a service and again, get that kickback based on our aid ratio. So after all that, our year-to-year increase is just looking under $1.5 million.
May I ask just a quick question? You had said we had like seven retirements?
Yep.
So just at a high-level initial projection, are we replacing those folks? And we're, you know, net equal on this? Are we cutting back staff due to just better scheduling or smarter alignments? Or do you anticipate in addition to staff in excess of the four custodial position jobs? Have you guys sorted through that yet, just at a high level?
Right now, at a high level, it looks flat. So we're expecting to replace each one of the people that are retiring.
Okay. But not, at least at this point, not anticipating multiple other positions above that?
Correct. There are cost savings from attrition that we have captured. But yeah, like you said, there are positions that they needed to be refilled.
So Connor, while rates were dropping over the years, we periodically would refinance our debt on borrowings from our capital projects. At this point, are we locked into low rates so that there's no more opportunity to refinance any debt that we have outstanding at a lower interest rate?
Very limited on that and our rates are pretty low. They range from 3% to 4%, so.
Fortunately, the school carries that actually carry credit debt is very active. It's for us to watch and fill it. So that's a, that's a good thing. If we have to borrow, at least people have, have borrowed it for good reasons.
Yep. And what, we had our fiscal stress monitoring score that got, that got published just about a month, month and a half ago, that we have, we show no fiscal stress and that, that builds into that credit rating and it keeps our rates low. So investing in our initiatives, a lot of, a lot of things that we've been implementing and that have already been implemented and just been focusing more on. So social, emotional, mental health. We have credit recovery due to the COVID-19 pandemic, so we were offering before, during, after-school tutoring, during breaks, during the summer. Any, any possible chance we can get to get our students in there to help them get back to where they should be. Closing potential learning gaps in all, in all tier students. Not one, not two, not three, all students. They might, might look like they have good test scores, but it could be struggling. So it's peeling back that curtain on everybody. Not the ones that just stick out like the sore thumb. So it's doing our diligence on all tier-- So it's doing our diligence on all-tiered students and making sure that no stone unturned. Investing in academic intervention services, so there's, then there's the literacy and science of reading, so written wisdom, trying to see, can answer questions on that if they come up. So we have an influx and a, pretty much a boom of E&amp;L and special education students to increase, just from an E&amp;L standpoint. About three or four years ago, we had less than five, we're up to, I think, 17 or 18 E&amp;L students. So there's a lot of support there. We have two teachers and then one support staff, just, and we only had one to begin with. So more need there, and we'll give them anything they need. Again, technology increases, that's only going to get bigger. Health and safety, so PPE, ventilation, air purification stuff, and then professional development, we always need to invest in our people. We can invest in our students, but we don't, if we don't invest in our people as well, that will hurt us in the long run. So federal funding, so as you remember, we had many conversations about this over the past almost two years. So once, once these funds were made available from the federal government, there's a sting in those packages. One of these was from President Trump, and another was from President Biden. So the CRSA was from President Trump, and the ARP was from President Biden. So like I said, these funds are, were made available to us, but they do run out. The total amount was just around $1.1 million. So for the CRSA funds, what we're looking at, investing in, and so we did have community forums to solicit information from the community when we knew these funds were available, to try and poll to see what the concerns were, and these are a lot of the buckets that were, were repeated, let's say. So social, emotional health, again, technology needs, increased E&amp;L needs, addressing possible learning gaps through tutoring, that before, during, after-school, credit recovery. If you remember, last April, Mr. Santoro at our school did the boot camp over April break, which was super successful. I think we had almost 70, 80 students that did this and recovered almost about 40-something credits. So definitely a great initiative, and it was, the kids loved it, to be honest. Usually, you'd think they'd want to go home, but they came back. Our ARP fund, so we have reading specialists, there's been more need for reading specialists as COVID has taken its toll on our, on our students. So we're seeing more at the rate at the high school level and kind of a little bit all throughout our, our schools. So putting that support in there for reading specialists. Teaching assistance in co-taught classrooms, extended day or summer enrichment opportunities. So we've heard from the community that, you know, the education is great, the programs are great, but the extra stuff is also great. So just the stuff that doesn't have to do with academics, the fun stuff, the fishing trips down to the lake, the extra field trips, things like that that help them unwind and become themselves rather than just thinking about school 24/7. So just initiate, invest in those, you know, summer enrichment opportunities or just extended day opportunities. Again, before, during, after-school credit recovery, academic intervention services, PPE, filtration, ventilation, and purification stuff. Additional custodial maintenance also. Like I said, we've been severely understaffed through this pandemic with additional responsibilities, insurmountable amount of responsibilities to, that were added to these people. They keep our doors open, they, they make it all happen behind the curtain, so it's just props to them and kudos to them, but just additional overtime just to, for, to keep doors open, just through the, through the summer. We had, they would clean at night, and the next morning, contractors would come in the next day.
We had 100 more. Wheel bars.
That one's like a big monitor, too.
So just one of the biggest things, we had 184 windows replaced in the summer in our high school, middle school. So the abatement.
Espaces abatement.
Espaces abatement, it was just insurmountable that we even got that done, but to open our doors and not necessarily a school was impressive, just a good one. So, and then again, professional development, investing in our own people and making sure we're, we're building our people, we're getting them to where they need as things change.
Just a couple of questions before you move on from this slide. So this money, let's just say it's, what is it, $975,000 or $1 million?
Like 1.1, yeah.
This does not yet add into our operating budget?
This is totally separate from the budget.
Separate line item. And then, do we have to fill out yearly report cards or file what we, how we're spending the money just to make sure we're compliant?
Yeah, so there's a long list of assurances that come with this funding, so we have to abide by, you know, we have to go out every six months to a year to solicit more information to see how we can spend these funds. We'll be holding, you know, community forums, meetings about ways in which.
Like the ones we had in the spring, similar format?
Correct, yeah, the past three or four months we had, yeah.
And this money, how, they have expiration dates. Do you have to stretch, do we have to stretch the money over the, let's go to the long that goes to 24, do we have to stretch it out to 2024? Or if there was something really opportune for us to spend it on that fit the criteria and we spent it all next year, is that okay? Or do they expect you to just drag it out?
You can, you can spend it once your allocation was approved. There was a lot of districts that had the knee-jerk reaction to spend it for the purifications and the HVAC stuff, and it turned out they didn't need all of that. So we were thankful enough to pump the brakes, solicit information, see what we needed, ask, ask everybody before we, we jumped in and started spending funds. So, and it can be spent over the life of the.
So at this point, we are anticipating that we will just stretch it out over the, well, it's like, I guess about another year, year and a half for the first one and?
Two and a half.
Two more years on the second.
Yep, so as I've said through this process, the delays on this just kept the delay in filing, kept getting pushed back because it was so new to everybody. I've said through this process, just we need, we needed to apply for these funds because if we didn't by March 22nd of this month, it goes back to the federal government. So we have to at least claim those funds. What we claim can be changed at any time as we go through this process and spend these funds over the allotted time period. We can definitely do that.
And the, the way that it's written, it gives us the flexibility that we can use it for programming or for staffing that programming as well?
Absolutely, yeah.
But then, as with anything, we either need to plan in the budget to.
To build it in.
Build that in so we own it after 2024.
That's correct.
Or it goes away.
Right, that's correct.
But not, yep.
Yep, yeah. So it's just forward-thinking. Like I said, you can't think of one year from a budgeting standpoint, it needs to be three, three at a minimum, and then, you know, five, five if you're lucky, but. Any other questions on this one? So just some upcoming dates, so Budget Workshop we just had yesterday, and then we had one on the 10th as well. Upcoming BOE meeting, so tonight, and then we'll have a budget conversation, it's April 5th. More budget conversation, April 19th, will be the night that we adopt the actual budget, May 3rd. Another means of, there's meetings almost every two, every two weeks until the meeting. We actually get three, three weeks this, this time till the next one, but two weeks after that. So May 3rd will be the introduction of the board's BOE candidates, and then the final presentation of the budget. May 17th will be the actual vote and certification of the vote. So again, the propositions will be the budget, this general fund budget, the library, and then the purchase of the buses. And that will be just the verbiage of those will be approved tonight. The bus proposition was approved last board meeting. Again, that was still a lot to vote, it's just the language. Board petitions due April 18th by 5:00 p.m. at the district office, so that's 30 days prior to the vote. And then Eric and I would plan to go out into the community and have miscellaneous presentations and just open dialogue about the budget process or any other concerns that people have, and those dates and times will come in the future. And then the budget vote is May 17th, 2026, and it'll be here before we know it.
Thank you, Connor.
Yeah.
And you're, this, this is all presentation you get posted on the other side?
It was, yeah.
After you add word, I can answer the other side.
I'll make it different colors.
Just making it?
Yeah.
Okay. And this, where is this information on the school website, under the budget tab?
It'll, there'll be a new 2022, 2023 budget information.
And then you can put it down there, and that's where all the budget information is?
Yep.
Thanks.
Any further questions, Mr. Connor, tonight?
I think I can answer that.
I thought you said, is that your conclusion report?
Just a couple more things, I apologize, but, so, our budget and finance has worked over the past year to get together a financial reserve plan of the district. So this is what, a lot, Christine Demas started this, and then I took over for just, you know, simplifying it, making it more applicable, and looking at all the reserves that we have, just a one-stop shop for the reserves, what they can be used for, the goal that we have for the, for the reserve, and just our target funding. So just with the board approval, there's, there's simple questions up here that explain what a reserve is, what it can be used for, helpful links. So with the board approval, we'd like to make this document public and put it on the website just for additional transparency. So if you've had time to review this, I'll entertain questions or I can just put it on the website.
It's a nice synopsis of what the reserves are.
And I think we, we, and this really needs you, Connor, no offense, talk in a lot of acronyms, and ERS, and EPS, and TRS, and all that, and it gets, it gets very jumbled, and if you don't do this every day, it gets very confusing, and I think this is a very good source for the community to see what all of those different funds are and why, on its surface, it looks like, wow, there's all this money, but why we can't touch it and why it has to stay there?
Very restricted, yeah.
And, yeah, and what those restrictions are. So I think this will be helpful for people that don't really read this to understand what all those different buckets are.
You know, carrying reserves and having a fund balance, you know, you gotta sign fund balances as a school district, is absolutely what kept our doors open during COVID, while other districts closed and we're not, we're not able to provide a person destruction. That is absolutely what allowed us to do that as a district. We needed eight to nine additional people, if you remember back to 2020, and that was a pretty remarkable opportunity to have.
Yeah, that is true. When you joined the school district, the board was in a posture of, oh, this guy is calling, and we don't know what we're going to do. We were anticipating a significant shortfall, and we were contemplating, unfortunately, the elimination of the NIC positions. And you came in and you convinced us that that's not really the strategy of power of order, if anything, going to need more people to stay in these during COVID. And you ended up being exactly correct, and unbeknownst to the school district, we did receive a fusion of federal funds, which helped us significantly. So that was a great call.
Well, thanks to the board for being as responsible as it's been over the years to have a doubt. Those funds, if those reserves weren't funded, if, if there was no fund balance, that wouldn't be the sort of that we could have considered.
And that Tom shared stories with us. About 10 years ago, we didn't have fund balance, and we had to make cuts on sports and other people, and so we're fortunate enough to have that rather than, yeah, except what we were at before.
Yeah, my students were younger during those, those periods of time, and, you know, I think they missed the field trips. Sometimes you don't know as a student what you're missing, and, you know, you're still seeing your friends, and you're still going to school, and it was wonderful here even with those reductions. But I, I will never take those things regretted as a, as a person in a supportive school district here, because I think those things make a big difference for students. It's unfortunate that we were not able, it, it's great that we had as many kids in school as we did during COVID. Also, you need to recognize that we were not able to have some of the older kids in school for a significant part of their school year.
Sure.
And that's unfortunate. But it's, it's good that we got agreement back at the end of last year.
Thank goodness. Before the board moves on, Connor, did the board want to discuss initial thoughts about the, the different tax scenarios? Do you want to pull that slide back up quick? So there were the four scenarios that we had put together. I know traditionally, the board asked for that, three or four different looks. And, you know, you typically go from the high end, the low end, and options in between. So you saw the history, the board had traditionally not got the cap other than that year. The 1.8 and change right there on the, on the top left line, the 1.82 represents, as Connor gave such a detailed explanation, it's the cost of building business year over year.
Connor, do you have a slide that shows the total dollar amounts that we are bringing in at each tax amount increase and how that relates to all those additional expenses? And sorry, I'm on the spot.
Not on this slide, but I can, I can tell you if I could.
Just so, so we can see the gap, the difference? Because if the, if the lower amount, the lowest percentage just covers contractual oblig, contractual obligations, then there's still a pretty big gap from those budget expenses that you showed. And so I would be interested to see how big or small the gap is at each tax increment, and then where the money for the difference of the gap is coming from. And sorry, I don't mean to make you.
Nope.
Have it all right in front of you. I'm also starting while.
No, no, I was gonna ask Connor to simply tell us what you recommend.
So each, each incremental step is about a $90,000 additional.
Okay.
Well, I was just gonna say, the only, I, I think, I mean, personally, I think those are reasonable, I don't have a problem. My only concern is it's out of your control. I worry about what our assessments are gonna be coming with the house sales, and so I think the column of the, you know, the $450,000 house potentially, we could, like, realistically, we could become a $900,000 house. You know, having to keep in mind what the future looks like here, too. But personally, I think all those percentages, I mean, are very reasonable.
They are reasonable, though, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, say again, you said when you looked at all the homes right now, it was 225?
The most people have that in their house.
Above the mode, you said?
Yep, but the average house.
What year was that data from? Another.
This year.
That's year.
You know, I mean, that's just, I'm shocked.
That's, that's home value. People, people.
Yeah, assessed value, which.
People could have been in their homes for 10, 15 years, and that home is worth $250,000. And hasn't been assessed.
Right, well, that's my fear with all this, that there's gonna be a bigger assessment check.
What's our equalization rate at right now? Because it's, I don't think the town's gonna get it any, not gonna go up. So Gary, you had asked about, you had asked about recommendations?
Yeah.
So the, the budget is, obviously, the board has to weigh in on what their decision is for this. The one thing, typically, school business managers always want to go to the capital biz. That one slide, you can see what the, the money left on the table year over year was. And then on the other side of that coin is you want to make sure that you are at least covering expenses so that training isn't like a station, and you're likely to get further and further. So I don't, I don't know what the community's appetite is for, you know, going to the cap on something like that, but what, and I explained this last year, some of my colleagues will say, well, at this level, we get this, and at this level, we get that. And I always felt that was a little disingenuous because if something's important, we're gonna try to figure out how to do it anyway. And I, I don't subscribe to standing in front of the community, and it feels like a.
Quick pro quo.
Yeah, quick pro quo or something dishonest to me. So, you know, for, for me, I would say, my recommendation is to at least cover the cost of rising prices year over year.
Which is quite lucky.
The 1.1.
Most from a way to right, so that's.
Most probably way to write, so that's.
Dan, what do you think?
I was, I was, that's kind of what the equalization rate is, he says eighty-five percent, I mean, that, until the town reassesses everybody, you get back to a hundred percent, others will be paid more than they should be paid.
The lower pays more.
Yeah, um, until that comes back, and the townships, I mean, West Niles and Waspa won't have a hundred percent, so when you look at their rates, it's a little bit different, um, but when you look at Skinnell's, Marcell's.
Marcell's and Niles.
Have I said Marcell's and Niles?
Those two's go worse.
Yeah, it's just the numbers, when you look at the numbers there, it's, it looks a lot worse than what it could be, um, but until Skinnell's reassesses, the people that, that Connor said, they're gonna be paid more than they should be paying, um, and as somebody brought up, the housing values continue to rise, um, so until that gets strained out, some of the people that have not as much income might have difficulty with some of these, these numbers. But I, I think overall, I gotta look at it more in depth, I mean, normally, this type of thing, you take out the high, you take out the low, maybe you end up in the middle somewhere, so.
So we can, obviously, you've got some thinking to do, and some conversations to have, and, uh, this is a good first look, and, uh, we'll figure out where.
Maybe K is one on the other, maybe K is one on the other, and what is supported by, you know, you're marking two pretty much days here, and these two, and then, and then, you know, just maybe K is one on the other, that's basis of what we should have decided, I think, so.
Same to say, the budget.
The budget, yeah, we're always packing up.
When you get three tenths, you have so much three tenths, um, can, it would be helpful for me just to see that the total generated by each of these amounts is, you know, at least a rough estimate, and then against what the total budget increase for this year is, and then what the gap is, if there is one, if that is, and obviously not for tonight.
Can you convert that to dollars for you or what?
Yeah, convert it to dollars, like, at the, at the two point five, we're gonna bring in nine hundred twelve thousand, and our total budget increase next year is a million, so we're only short, whatever that math was, those numbers are just, you know.
So you, you can see up here, this is the amounts coming in at those rates, so, one point eight-two, it goes out six decimal places, so it's a little-
Hey, Connor, sorry, I can't.
Blue it up on the picture.
Oh, thanks, thanks.
So, we said it was four eighty-four, but it goes out six decimal places, so that's just rounded up, so that would just be a one eight-two flat, um, okay, just almost four hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, two point one five, just over five hundred seventy-one thousand dollars, so again, it's like about a ninety thousand dollar increase each one, so, two point five, um, six hundred, almost sixty-five thousand dollars, and then your max is just over seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, so.
I'd say like, thank you, K, but it's a good one.
Yep.
And that's just, uh, maybe the maximum thing is, is just what, sure, about six thousand dollars.
Yep, at, at the, at the minimum, one point eight-two, it's about, it ranges from a twenty-two to thirty percent raise per thousand dollar possessed. Up to the max, uh, thirty-four to forty-seven.
Forty-seven cents per thousand of assessed value.
At the very top.
At the top, okay.
For the worst, um, assessed, assessed.
And we can have this discussion again at the April fifth meeting, ask some more questions, or get our questions to you in advance, so we can, you can have some, some answers.
Between now and then, let us know if you're thinking what other information that you might wanna see, and then we'll have it all prepared for you at the next meeting, and-
Assuming you'll have a number that night.
Start the dabbler.
Yeah, yeah.
By, by that meeting.
We need to have a vote on the number at the next meeting?
No, it's, uh, but if Kathy Vogel delivers a budget uptime, well, actually, we have our numbers at April first, and we're, we're hoping for that.
We can show you what, what, if there is a gap still, and if we are reluctant to get five percent of foundation aid, maybe not three, but, uh, so, we'll, once we have those final hundred percent, it'll be easier to come up with another.
This is technically the worst case scenario, if I can show you runs, it's like under promise, over deliver.
And is it at the April fifth meeting, or the subsequent one, where we see a more detailed budget?
The next one.
The next one, so we'll see, athletics will have a line, and extracurriculars will have a line, and instructional stuff, just so that, this was just, cause so many people are tuning in, I'm sure, the cursory view of the budget, and how it's going to lay out, the next time, we will get into the details, and then that will-
So tying in with that, our Knut's Strat meeting, which is March twenty-eighth, is it likely that we would have much information from what the community wants for the next five years, prior to when we come back to discuss again, as we talk about each line item?
We, we may have, uh, a general sense of what was discussed, and what was talked about, but I don't, we won't have our final work done, but.
I was gonna say, all hands still.
Yeah.
Come together a little bit.
Yeah, so, so Strat, twenty-five years, right?
Yes.
So, we may have a slight, we put some takes, because of the time difference between when five lies strat, and when five lies budget, and it just means we may have to compensate in the year two, three, four, as we, since we have that attached to it.
Connor, thank you.
So, that's all.
Sorry for any questions.
No, it's all right. Absolutely, I welcome what it is.
All right, so if we're ready to move on then, with meeting, we're now on the business, like a motion from a board member with a grouping of items A, B, C, D, together, for a simple vote, item A is the personnel report, requirements for the nation leaves terminations for tonight. Item B is the personnel report, substitute temporary appointments. Item C is probation and permanent appointments, and then item D is the Clay Target Club recommendation.
So, start it.
It's been moved and seconded, is there a discussion on that group of motions?
Maybe just because it is new, it's expanded on the, the target club?
So this is, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, what?
The, the Clay Target Club, right.
The, the payment of, uh, funds for, is, but, the school, the school has been-
Okay, I was just saying, I was like, wait, I missed something, that was previously just a club.
The school's been affiliated, they came before the board and asked for the school's permission to be affiliated with it, and they can maybe talk, know about that, uh, Tom can, just the history there.
So, yeah, I apologize, I confused, I confused the statement about it being new, the Clay, the Clay Target Club, I think arose about five years ago, it's rifle, it's shotgun shooting at clay targets, it's done, I think at the-
Right, Dunbar Club, no.
You hear it.
Yeah.
I got a warning pump, oh, I love it.
With our, with our rural tradition, that was a, was a club that some students approached us on, and John King oversees that club for, for our school district, and they had competitions, they had practice, and they moved into a competitive phase, and, um, it's something that the students who were involved in that enjoyed.
Big numbers, too.
Yeah, big, big numbers.
It's definitely popular.
They've got thirty kids?
Yeah, 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 so, so the deal is, that I believe they were self-funded initially, or a club funded, and now given the popularity of the club, and the fact that we, so, significantly still need, they come before the board to request funding through the school district.
A lot of times, this is how clubs come to be, is that there's, uh, you know, some sort of interest level that has been generated initially, and then sustained over years, and then becomes-
But just to clarify for the public, like, the school's not just starting, it's been there, we are just now kind of-
Correct.
I have reading apps, adopting it. Security on the school, cause it came about, like, kind of a tough time, we were talking a lot about school insecurity, and school shootings, and, and people took a gamble on it, and I think the kids love it, so.
The kids do love it.
And I will say, as someone who has a child that participates, it is very, the rules, and the way that they have those kids set up, and the, the safety, and how they're explained to them, I mean, I've never seen boys pay attention so much, cause they know that this is, you know, a very serious thing, and something, you know, to pay attention to, and getting rave reviews in my notes, I don't get it, but.
It's one of the things that you're not doing in life, where there's no room for error.
Right.
So, that, that's a bit of a complex, uh, further discussion, further questions on the group of motions. So I would refuse myself from the vote on this, because I'm an actress who voluntarily tried to, like, for a certified coach, and I'm listed on it. If there's no further discussion, and all in favor of the group of motions, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes, any motion that's carried, I refuse. They continue on, uh, next, before us, is the Skinnell's Education Foundation Grant. And this is for the, for number of people, Josh Williams, the class of nineteen fifty-one grant, program, the drama projection champion, Brian Franco, and the solar plant club, which was, uh, Dan Burson, I think it's probably Lily B. Therson. So motion for four members for our grateful acceptance of those, those grants from the Skinnell's Education Foundation.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion?
Just a huge thank you to SEM, so cool opportunities our, our kids get, our teachers get, it's just such a, it's a unique and special thing, and, uh, this is the only community that I've had the privilege to work in that had, uh, a foundation up and running, and the fact that they're so active and creative is really remarkable, so, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your work. Okay, then, uh, if there's no further discussion, and all in favor of accepting that jet, that, uh, grant funding from the SEM, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, they can do accept that funding with grateful appreciation. Next is the Ellen Family Foundation Scholarship, and this is board approval of the acceptance of that, um, scholarship, but the foundation for, are you part of this?
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion on this motion?
Uh, just a clarification here, um, in, in the letter, it says that the two, um, female students are receiving thousand dollar donations, they changed that to fifteen hundred each, to eat up to three, the three thousand, from last year, we have an additional thousand dollars that will be given to the health student for this year, so the donation's the same, just wanted to clarify on the amount to the students.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thanks.
Any discussion, any further questions, presumably for Connor? And then, all in favor of the school district accepting the Ellen Family Foundation Scholarship, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, okay, again, with, um, thanks to the Ellen Foundation, uh, we very much appreciate that, that, that grant, that foundation scholarship.
Well, congratulations to the students.
Yeah, congratulations to the students. Okay, next is item G, this is the first reading of policy seventy-three twenty, alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and other substances laws. So this is just, uh, us receiving that first reading note, is online, correct?
Yes, it is, so I was clarifying with you, does it need to be read, oh, it's long? It is long.
So we generally don't read the, uh, read the policies, if they're not public and can be retrieved.
And it'll come against the board again, next meeting, for final check.
This is more, if there's questions, objections, any, to the language that is called.
And for the board members that aren't on the policy committee, it's Amanda, Tom, and myself, it is the existing alcohol tobacco and drug policy and other substances, and in about four places, we added the word marijuana, now that marijuana is a legal substance in New York, we needed to clarify the existing policy, that our no smoking policy on campus, also includes marijuana, and the best way to do that is to specifically say marijuana, marijuana, marijuana in about all four paragraphs, so, um, it's just an update to the policy that we already had in place, and back in two thousand nineteen, the year I joined the board, what was it, eighteen, nineteen?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, we took the same policy and added the word they think, and we've just, just enhancing.
Evolving.
Evolving with the tacks on this one, so if anybody wasn't clear, smoking marijuana is for the grounds, is not.
Or, or any, or beating it.
Or smoking anything in school grounds.
Yeah, you smoke marijuana.
So, uh, is there an action required from the board on this?
No, this is just information, not action.
Thank you, continuing on then, uh, next, I would request that motions in order to, uh, to prove notice at the annual school district meeting, opposed?
So, second.
It's been moved and seconded, so, any discussion, any, any questions on this? The legal wording is, uh, is on board docs. If in all favor of us approving the annual, uh, school vote for May seventeenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, they can do, uh, approve that action, and, um, next is the OSIS ad hoc agreement, twenty twenty-two, and this is, uh, for a bunch, for use prevention, uh, for, uh,
To Marsyweed. I'm moved. I'm so moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion on the, uh, the OSIS. And this is, this is OSIS funding for that position.
It's twenty-five thousand dollars, yep, per year.
Yep. And then, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of us approving that agreement, twenty twenty, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, then I'd like to approve Jane, Jane K. the other, uh, and this is the OSIS telegraph agreement, as well as the health services agreement, of course, and see.
So moved, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, discussion on this motion? So my only question is, we feel like the, uh, OSIS telegraph agreement meets the electronic needs and computer needs as best we can, and it's best alternative available, given the, you know, the flexible needs that we add to support ourselves for remote earnings, for example.
Absolutely, the price and the convenience and the kickback, absolutely.
So the kickback is, it's a poster, so we get, uh, refund, we get funding through OSIS, basically, we get stated on that one.
Yes.
She had to rely on the heat was awesome this last year, to be in the single hour.
Not, not internal.
Glad to hear it, thank you, Mr. Phil, and for the, uh, for putting something around, making it all happen, so. Okay, if there's no further discussion, uh, no further questions, then all in favor of approving item Jane K. the OSIS telegraph agreement, as well as the health services agreement, of course, and see, uh, school district, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, they can do, and that's approval. And proposition one is the general budget, and this is to decide before the public, or their survey, and this could be for the May seventh meeting, and the meeting, correct?
Yes, correct, this is just the, the language and the wording surrounding the propositions, and this will go, um, publicized in papers, um, just provide information of what's in the upcoming vote, again, we obviously, since we just had conversations, don't have the actual numbers yet, um, so it's just the, the proposition and part of the language.
Thanks for that clarification, so motion for a board member Phil, let us to, uh, to approve that proposition.
Who?
Tucker.
It's been moved and seconded, further discussion, further questions regarding this? And then, on favor of, all in favor of us- Okay, then on favor of, all in favor of us approving proposition one, general one budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, we do that motion carries. Next is the Scandals Library Loving. We've already discussed this during the presentation. Motion from a board member for us to approve that in the vote that we reported for proposition three for May 17th.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. And wording of that is before us, now is also on board acts. Any discussion, any questions on the motion? Okay, then all in favor of approving the Scandals Library Loving is proposition three for both, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, so the motion carries. So those propositions are subject to official debate. So the public can say on that to direct vote. Okay, literacy purchase. I'd like to actually approve items N, O, Q in order to validate this as a literacy purchase. It is the change order issued by 2021. It's a special request for the property of the school district to comply and require its access and exceptions upon mandatory course for tonight and in the simplest months of January and February. And honestly, it's our exceptions of committing a special event and committing a recent special education class for the week.
So.
Second.
Moved by Dan, seconded by Danielle. Questions on that group of motions?
Just one or probably like six, but so the literacy purchase, the win wisdom, this is to just continue expanding down. And I think these were all for kindergarten, if I read the thing right. Was that K2?
K2.
Or K2, okay. So it's to take the current program and just now expand it through Waterman so that all the students in Waterman are on track with the same reading program that will carry them through up through eighth grade.
Correct.
Okay. And so your purchases these now, so we'll start implementing this in the fall?
Correct. We'll lay pilot in the spring of module zero, which is a six lesson arc to help teachers and students become familiar with some of the instructional routines and just language so that when they start next year, there's some familiarity. And also it helps with the professional learning that will embark upon the summer.
And that will be for K1 and 2, they'll all start at level zero or whatever?
Module zero.
Module zero.
Like just to dip their toe in the water, get some experience. So then when they're planning over the summer, they feel like they've had some experience with some of the routines and structures with students.
Okay, great.
Now, will you do that professional development or does someone come and do the programming today?
So one of, I think one of the items on there is the professional learning. So some of the professional learning, we will ask Great Minds, the parent company, to come in and facilitate. Some of the kind of extended opportunity to plan and have some collaborative conversations, I'll lead and facilitate. And then when teachers, if teachers for some reason can't make a session, I can also help to catch them up and provide some of that professional learning.
Great, thank you. And then just looking ahead or maybe however you've done it with the State Street to middle school transition, how does that work? Because they're, they're physically located in separate buildings. So how are you helping the, let's say the second grade teacher kind of bridge up to the third grade teacher in terms of the learning and with the students?
It's a great question. Starting, well, the K1 and 2 teachers all had a full day step back. We call that, was it opportunity to kind of take a step back and look at not only small construction routines and materials that we're using to align to the science of reading, but also then to look forward and give an overview of win wisdom. Some of the videos I made early on of the 3 through 8 teachers and the implementation were shared to give them a little kind of interest and peek into that along with a presentation and overview. They explored the actual resources, including the teacher manuals and the cortex at every module for each grade level. In addition to that, this coming Friday, we have designed a, on our professional learning day, we've designed a panel discussion. So our 3 through 8, 3rd through 8th grade teachers will be sharing out some of their lived experiences over the past almost two years now with implementing this core ELA curriculum and sharing with K1 and 2 teachers. Part of that session will also be a mix and mingle. Where K8 teachers will have the opportunity to vertically just ask questions and or share out about their experiences in groups together. Then the next step is that K1 and 2 teachers will visit classrooms at State Street and the middle school. Some of the primary teachers have also asked if they can see actually like the kindergarten classroom. So we're making those opportunities also available to some of the districts in the area that are implementing with some and or some video conferencing with districts across the country that we've become connected with that have had like four or five years' experience. So seeing those classrooms of what it looks like down the road. Then they'll actually experience the training at the end of April, pilot module zero, have some additional professional learning over the summer in time for planning and then roll into very supported implementation of module one and throughout that first year. So we're hoping that by seeing it, by, by talking, seeing it in action, experiencing the professional learning will really help to support their initial implementation of within K1 and 2. And our third grade grade teachers, you know, I look back and think they didn't have some of those experiences. And yeah, we've had districts across the region actually coming to us and asking today. In fact, we hosted a team from another district asking to see our implementation in action. So it's just a really nice collegial, not only within our district, but beyond that to partner. And we thought partners to support one another in our work.
To take this out as a normal year is a heavy lift to do it during COVID-19 when everything else was almost unthinkable. And somehow Francine and John and Mike got it done. So kudos and thanks for all your work.
Our students are incredible.
Our, our teachers at State Street Middle School have been enthusiastic. We've had the opportunity to watch them and watch them on lessons to their peers and to, to thought partners from the parent company that come out and watch. So it's been just something that they just say that we should be very proud of.
It will be interesting to see how the Waterman kids who will have the longest exposure to this in five years from now, even when they just get to middle school, how it impacts not only their ELA but all of their other subjects because reading is part of everything. It'll be, it'll be interesting to see how this unified reading curriculum will help all of their academic endeavors. It'll be interesting to watch.
The alignment to evidence that what we know about how to teach students how to read, how to be authentic, you know, writers, how to have discourse and have conversations around what they're learning is incredible. And then not only to have that organized within a grade level, but then across nine grade levels. We're really excited. And then already seeing some of that impact even just over the course of two years. Mr. Brown, our principal Waterman, also joined us for observations, guided observation for leaders at State Street and Middle School recently to see some of that construction in action. And he was able to take that back and talk about it with the staff members. And I just want to call out the incredible work our Waterman, our teachers at Waterman and our students have been engaged in the last couple of years. They really honed in and focused enough, focused in on that portion of their reading growth for what we call the simple view of reading and really focusing on phonological awareness, phonics knowledge so that then they can get ready to be focusing now on the upper strand of Scarborough's or what we call language comprehension. So their work in time has made them ready now to move into this next space in their instruction.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Francine. Pleasure to be here.
So what are the further questions that you have for the discussion on the group of motions?
Yeah, Connor, on the change order for project 2021 for change order 12 or point, the one regarding the site work for the municipal gym parking lot. So in the fall of 2021, they installed a pathway which was non-ADA compliant. Now they want us to pay to have it correctly because they installed it incorrectly. Is that how you read that?
It wasn't, we weren't paying for the temporary one. They just did the pre-work in the beginning because the grading level was so different from the new level of the bottom floor of the gym. So it was not ADA compliant. They put something there temporary, but we weren't paying for, then put the temporary part there just to redo it and do it again, no.
Because the way they worded it doesn't make it sound that way. So, okay.
Any questions, further discussion? Okay, there's no further discussion. All in favor of approving items N, O, Q in order, contents general, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, group of motions, so carry. This now brings us to closing items. First, completing process review. This is the janitor's time for the open meeting. Possible times are either AM, 4:00 PM, or during the afternoon, Tuesday, March 25th.
Tuesday, March 29th.
Is that, oh, sorry.
25th on Friday.
Twenty, I'm sorry, 29? Is that right?
29.
I'm sorry. That was my mistake. March 29th.
29, right?
I can almost do like the 4:15, done. I've got a little cross screen that I should have passed.
Yeah, nobody can do it, just let me know. I'll already do it.
Can you do it, Cheryl?
Oh, Becky can do it.
Okay, Kathy, you can do that in time.
4:15, November 29th.
Okay, the next announcements are already been out over the upcoming meetings during conference or presentation. This now brings us to the second opportunity.
I have a copy of your July 6th, 2021, what about meeting minutes and which you all approved on August 3rd, 2021. The July 6th minutes state that the treasurer, deputy treasurer and school business manager are all personally bonded for a million dollars each. And when I inquired about these bonds, I was then told that the July 6th minutes were incorrect. That that portion of the minutes were incorrect. And I was told that you would be amending those minutes tonight since you approved them in August, on August 3rd. So do you have plans on amending those minutes from July 6th if in fact the, the minutes is incorrect? Or, or am I to assume that the information on individual bonds is correct?
We'll have to review that language and definitely get back to it.
Okay, fine, okay. I was told they were incorrect and the Mrs. Norton had counted around with emails that they would be amended tonight. I'm just curious, you know, since there are public document, you know, stating that if they're incorrect, I would think that publicly you would have to amend them to make them correct.
I think we'll, I'll follow up with our school attorney and review that and then if there are corrections that are necessary.
Okay, thank you.
So, the comments from members of the public. There is no further business prepared by the board tonight. Request a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I got it.
This one's been seconded. All in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.